I'd like to call an order the Tuesday, March 15th, meeting of the Monmouth City Council. I ask, fellas, for a roll call, please.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Guthrie.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Milligan.
Here.
Counselor Schaefer is excused. Counselor Silvernagle.
Here.
Mayor Oberst.
Yes. All right, sir, the vice presidents, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for us.
Thank you all. Next item tonight is the consent counter, which consists of the minutes from the council meeting of February 16th and the work session at the same evening. In fact, I have a motion to approve. Move approval of both?
Second.
Moved and seconded in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And we'll approve both of those. Short mayor's report tonight. Great basketball game last night at Western Oregon University. I hope everybody got a chance to go to that. The Wolves Men theme is off to the National Elite Eight Tournament in Frisco, Texas. Playing not this Thursday, but next, as I recall right now.
Yeah, perhaps Wednesday.
Right. And everybody else is playing their games tonight, so we'll find out who, what the pairings are coming up before too long. And, you know, looking forward to seeing them win three more games. On their way. And I have some appointments tonight. I have three. I'd like to appoint Gwen Wheaton. She's asked to serve on the Monmouth Engage University Community Connections Committee. George Jeffrey has asked to serve on the Budget Committee. And Thomas Stinke has asked to serve on Planning Commission.
I have one question.
Aye.
Isn't she from, she's not in town, isn't she? She lives outside town?
No, they all, all three of those have Monmouth residences listed on their application.
He had Mom at the post office, and then one of them live on the Creek. I mean, I missed it.
That, I don't know. Weingard Avenue East is what's listed.
The one guy was, just asking. Because I didn't think that was in the city limits of her, where she lives. Maybe I'm wrong.
Gwen.
Gwen?
Yeah. However, we're not using that criteria for the Monmouth Engage committees.
Okay, I know. I know we're not.
Oh, the one in Maxfield Creek?
Yeah, and I believe she's moving, but I don't know to where. I believe it's in town.
And, you know, when I looked at that one a while, I thought this is somebody who's really engaged in the community already anyway.
I know, it was the idea.
Yeah. We, I think, the council made a deliberate choice to try to have wider spread on the acceptance of folks applying to those Monmouth Engage committees, so that was, you know, keeping that in mind was a big part of why I was fine with that. So, I've appointed those, asked for my approval for those three appointments.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Nay.
Okay. And the only other item I have is I, because of my connection with League of Oregon Cities Transportation Policy Committee, I wind up serving on the ODOT Director's Policy Committee and had a chance to go to the quarterly meeting there on Friday. Heard a little bit about some coming federal funding and some changes in rules around things, nothing that really directs, directly impacts us, however. And with that, I'd like to turn to reports from boards and commissions. Darren, Counselor Silvernagle mentioned to me that he has a report from the Senior Center, which he did not make last time, and he asked if he could jump Q and throw that one in. So, I said absolutely, and Darren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Senior Center Advisory Board met on February 23rd. Just a couple of quick items. Soup and Pie Sale is the 17th, so a couple days from now. St. Patrick's Day, I guess, come to think about it. They're working on a no solicitation policy that they're drafting over there. Last I heard, there was still a gap on our, on our dollar amount between, to get our additions, so they're still, that's still being reviewed. And April 2nd is the next breakfast, 8:30 to 10:30 at the Senior Center. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Guthrie?
A little bit short notice for people that are hearing about it the first time, but at the library, it sounds like tomorrow at 3, the 16th, and, well, I forgot to put the time down. I believe it's noon hour. It's a lunch and learn, and there's an author of a book called Soup Night. Her name is Maggie Stuckey. Pre-registration is required, so you'll need to call or stop by the library. There may still be time to do that tomorrow. There's also a blood drive that's going to be happening on the 31st. That's a Thursday. The Red Cross has kind of scaled back some of their blood drive locations, just trying to get more efficient with where they can go to, to get the most return on their time investment. And so, it is a shortened period. It's only going to be offering slots between 8:30 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. Again, that's Thursday, the 31st. If you'd like to chip in and give a little blood, you need to schedule that at 1-800-RED-CROSS. That's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Johnson? Historic.
We had a meeting at the first of months of either historic or the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Carey, it's so nice to see you here after your recent unpleasantness. Glad to see you.
Nice to be here. The, the, the advisory board has been working on and planning for our spring planting, and I don't have, I couldn't locate the specific date, but it'll be in April, around the Earth Day thing, but not specifically Earth Day. I think Earth Day is the 23rd. This may be a bit a week or so before that. They have identified two primary areas where that will take place, and there's sort of a north area, fill-ins primarily, Jackson Street, Eccles, and then down south, Ackerman College Street, a couple, there are several on College Street, actually, Monmouth Avenue South. So, that is being planned. More information, I haven't attended the most recent one, and, but we'll get caught up, but that planning is going on, and there will be some activity this spring.
Okay, thanks, John. Counselor Schaefer's not here tonight. He had the Parks and Rec Board, and he asked me to pass along some information there. The Parks and Rec Board held a good initial discussion on use requirements for the Main Street Park Amphitheater, to help with reviewing materials from other jurisdictions that have amphitheater facilities. There were some suggestions made. Proposed regulations would be incorporated into the city's current group event policies for parks, and the standards would apply to events with more than 75 participants. And those amendments should focus on types of events allowed. For example, should commercial events be allowed or not? Damage policies and deposits, particularly for the stage and amphitheater structure. Sound system use and a deposit, and that's what the city makes the sound system available. And finally, scheduling, how far in advance can the facility be reserved. Going to continue the discussion on April 13th at the next meeting. So, that's the word from planning. Are there any community announcements? Hey, appearing none. I will turn to the city mayor.
Yeah, just one item, one note. City County Insurance Services had a recent conference, and it was actually set up way back in the, it was actually '81, when, based on the commercial insurers, said, "We aren't touching cities anymore," just across the board, and said, "No." So, people activated, so the Association of Borden Counties and Lake Warren Cities got together, and we got a nice plaque. We are one of the original members, so actually 35 years in the system, so it got a really nice plaque. That'd be cool.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it was good. But it was really interesting, because everything just collapsed, and people stood up otherwise, you had no insurance. You know, so got going, and now it's very healthy, very strong, offers great services. That's all I have.
All you got?
All I have.
Okay. Well, it says that you also have the Quarter 1 and Quarter 2 financial report.
That's not me.
I bet that would be...
Somebody else.
Mr. Dunmire's report. Pull that microphone over to your general direction, do it.
You mean, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council? So, yes, before you is, just wanted to give you an update on the first and second quarter finances. These are, I guess, kind of in catch-up mode a little bit still from the conversion. So, just, just kind of the highlights, and I listed these in my staff report. So, the intergovernmental revenues, if you, I was kind of looking as I went through this, looking at some of the differences, you know, comparing prior year, same time to current year. And the ones that jumped out at me as I was doing that are kind of what I've listed here. The first one was on these intergovernmental revenues. Those are typically pretty consistent, so when we were lower this year, I looked into that, and actually what's driving that, there's a couple of things. One, it's the timing of receipts, so really, there's not a dollar difference, it's just when they hit the general ledger. So, and then the other one was, we actually had, in the last fiscal year, we failed to accrue prior year revenue that we received. It was actually for fiscal year '14. We received that in early '15, and didn't accrue it back to '14 until we were well into the year. And so, we figured that out, but that throws off the percentage a little bit as well. So, anyway, so both of those were addressed, and when you take that, those into account, there's not anything going on there. So, that was something I was going to point out. And then, the other was court revenues. On the revenue side, it is slightly down, and that, I think, is largely driven just by the capability of officers to patrol and do what they do. And there's been some staffing constraints there that the police department's working through, and so I suspect that's part of what's driving that. As far as expenses go in the general fund, higher, a little higher than anticipated personnel service costs in the Parks Department, driven by the activity that we have in our parks right now and have had. So, that in a way is expected. And what we'll do with that, and we do this every year, as we get towards the end of the year, we'll look to, you know, see, particularly with our public works employees, because we budget them on an allocation for all of their salaries, and then we expense them as we go through the year, based on where they actually work and what they actually do. And so, so our budget is kind of an estimate of what we think is going to happen, and then we true that up at the end of the year. So, you'll see that in the Water Fund was the next one I noted. Personal services there are higher, yet they're lower in the Sewer Fund. And that, again, is just because of where the activities are, kind of, they gravitate to where the work is, and so, that's going on. So, anyway, that's where you see, what you see when you look at that. And the last thing I'll note, well, actually, two others. The debt service expenses in the Power and Light Fund were, you know, again, debt service is something, it's very predictable. So, we were off this year, down in the debt service in the Power and Light Fund, and that was the result of the refinance. So, there was a little bit of savings there, but largely, the difference right now that you see in the financials is a timing difference, because it used to be that we paid all the debt service in December, and now we pay part in December and part in June with the refinance. So, anyway, it'll all come out, you know, it'll be a little bit less than we budgeted in total when we get to June, but right now, it looks like it's quite a bit less than what we budgeted, you know, comparing to the prior year or so. And the last thing I'll mention is in the Street Fund, there was some capital outlay that was required to address a storm drain on Stadium, and so that was done. We'll need to do a budget adjustment at the end of the year. We'll be able to take care of that by resolution transfer, but it was something that needed to take place, and so that's why the percentage is up on that. As far as the investment reports go, they are, if I can find them, they're what we would expect as well. We generally do around 20,000-ish a quarter for interest revenues, and you can see how that gets allocated across the funds and what we're, what we've collected on a monthly basis. The funds are invested at the state pool. They are, actually, I was at a conference here last week, and the state is looking at actually creating a pool, a fund that will, that cities and counties could invest in if we were to elect to do that and alter our investment policies, that it would be a medium duration as opposed to short-term, so it would pay a little better interest. And they're actually going to draft up some, you know, sample investment policy language, and they presented it at the conference I was at and talked about that. It's not there yet. They're in the process of working on it, but I think it's something that a lot of cities and counties may look at, just because interest rates are low, and it would be a great thing to get a little bit more out of our, out of our cash funds.
How much are you talking about a little bit more on how, where immediate term is in?
Yeah, we're doing about a half a percent right now, and I think it's somewhere around, like, one and a half-ish, maybe. And as far as duration, I don't, it didn't seem like it was dramatically more. It was maybe a year and a half, something like that, 18 months, is what they were talking. I don't, it was still really fuzzy. They hadn't worked out all those details yet, but this is something that they, they had on their, on their priority list to try to come up with a medium-term type of an investment program, so.
Kind of along those same lines, the university system did that same thing themselves here a few years back.
Okay.
And so, our average right now is running about one and a quarter. So, I think it's probably one and a half on the high end and a half percent on the others.
Yeah.
But it's running a little over one and a quarter currently. So, the system chose to do that through the same set of pools, but moved part of it to the long-range pool.
Yeah.
So, I think it's possible.
Yeah. So, that's what I had to report. Any questions?
Yeah, I got one. On MyNet, we're, second quarter, we paid $375,000. First quarter was 200, and so, is that a, it shows in parentheses, so that's a minus, so can you explain that to me just a little?
Yeah, so, you're looking at the, at the bottom there, the $398,000 negative fund balance, is that what you're seeing on that?
Well, I'm seeing there, it says MyNet Fund on these two right here. These two, your sheets you handed out.
Oh, okay.
These two right here. There was a quick report. It said investment earnings year-to-date.
Right, okay.
So, the only minus on there is MyNet, so $375,000 is, is that to pay towards the bond, or is that, I mean, I'm just trying to get a handle on it.
This is, this represents cash balances on our books.
Right.
And so, what that means is that MyNet, right now, at December, has a negative cash balance in the fund.
Yes, that's what I wanted to find out.
Yeah, and that's because we, when, when we pay out the payments to the bank for the loans, bonds.
Right.
We wait for payment back from MyNet, and then whatever MyNet doesn't pay, then we will transfer in from Power and Light, and we do that towards the end of the year to bring the fund back in balance.
So, that's back in May?
Back to a positive cash position.
Is what you're saying. May or June, then, they pay back?
Yeah.
So, we're going to run up, how much of a, I mean, we're...
Yeah, the deficit, last year, we, we did, last fiscal year, the loans were in the range of about 800,000.
Okay.
So...
From us only? Just from our city?
Yeah.
Okay. And at the end of the year, then, what did we end up paying? They paid us back, but what was the change, you know, with the bond payment?
So, short-term loans total to date, as of last fiscal year, and we'll talk about this when we do the, when we get into the audit presentation.
Right.
Was around, I think it's 1.6 million, roughly in that range, that the, that MyNet, we have short-term loans with MyNet. MyNet wasn't able to pay back that amount of debt service to the city over the course of the bonds for the last several years. That's what the total is. So, and then there was additional this year, so we're over 2 million at this point, yeah, for short-term.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Are there any citizen comments? Name and study for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Mark Garten. I'm the sheriff of Apple County. Appreciate the opportunity just to give a quick update as to why I'm here. With the passage of the public safety levy, I'm trying to reach out to everyone and let them know what essentially the return on the investment is up to this point. Quick, you know, thousand-foot view down, we've hired 12 patrol deputies. They are not necessarily able to work by themselves. We have five in the academy. There's a couple in training, so they're not counted as a body, but they're in the training process, and we've hired all those 12 since, since July. We've hired about eight, well, we have hired eight people in our jail, and so, and they're in that same process, going to the academy and training. And so, we plan to be 24-hour patrols back by July. That's our plan, as long as everything goes how we like it, and everything seems to be going that direction. So, we are making progress. There's a few other things that were promised in the levy that, I wasn't the one making the promises, but they were promised, and that's why the community supported that levy. And so, I'm going to do everything in my power to make sure that, that occurs. I have, there's several things that are in motion in terms of other things that were promised, like computer forensics for the county, for countywide, for an examiner, that's occurring. There's also talk of our KNI program coming back for drugs and/or search dogs. That's also in the works, and also going back to the point team, and at least having a body available for the point team. And in the end, we'll have two bodies. We'll actually be supervising the team, and then we'll have one detective assigned to that as well, so that the team can function in case city agencies have to pull back their person for a period of time. It's not opening point and closing point, opening it back, and so we can maintain that. And so, those are the quick highlights of what we're doing, and I just wanted to come and thank you for that support that you gave back in, in May. It really is making a difference. And my office, we're, I, I'm open to comments, suggestions, ideas. Really, don't be afraid to ask questions of me, of things that are occurring, not necessarily in the city, but maybe the things that affect the city, because I know there are things that we do on our own that, that on a daily basis don't touch the city, but we have a jail that manages prisoners from the city every day. So, there's, I want to be able to have this working relationship with the cities, with the police departments, and part of my, my job is to go out and actually talk to people. It's not, to me, it shouldn't be the other way. It should be me reaching out and finding out what really does affect certain communities. I shouldn't just sit back and wait for people to come to me at some point. So, that's all I have to say. I just appreciate the time, and I, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or comments, concerns, suggestions.
Just a comment from me, John Carey. You and I have talked, and I think that we need to take every opportunity as councils and as citizens to thank all of the work that you guys do. I'm the direct recipient, I'm alive because of one of your reserve officers, and that's not something that passes from me lightly. And you guys do those kinds of things on perhaps a minor scale every day, and we need to recognize that and support you in the very difficult duties that you have. So, I would ask you to continue to come back if we can help with any of your initiatives. I, for one, would be happy to lead that charge from the Monmouth team. Thank you.
And I do plan, this isn't just a one-time thing. I plan to, it's not going to be every council meeting, but I am going to have either myself or representatives from my office that can talk on my behalf, that, so we can have that communication. If we don't have the communication, it's not working. It's, it is important to me to have that, so I just appreciate the time, so.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Turning to the business agenda, which consists of the fiscal year '14, '15 audit presentation.
Who gets that?
If you could give us your names, and we know you're from Grove Mueller, Swain.
My name is Kathy Wilson. I am actually the audit manager on the job. I'm out here doing the field work with my staff. I'm from Grove Mueller in Swain, I'm like Ryan Speaker himself.
My name is Ryan Pasquarella. This is my first year as the audit partner for your audit. I have taken over from Tom here doing it, but clearly, Tom doesn't stray too far away. And so, we are here this evening to present the audit for the '14-'15 fiscal year. It's a little past the end of the fiscal year, I think we all understand that, but clearly, there's been some things that have happened in this last year with the software conversion that kind of slowed down the whole process. So, we don't expect to be this late going forward, I will say. You should have received a few documents already, one of them being a nice, big financial statement. Yours is much prettier, and this is bound and everything. And then, there's also, should be a two-page letter that is on our letterhead. So, what I would like to do, first of all, is just discuss these with you a little bit and talk about some changes that you're going to see in the financial statements this year that were not in the financial statements last year. First of all, let's just look at the two-page letter here. This is our communication to the city council. We are hired by the city council to do an independent audit, and so this is our way of communicating to you how the audit went. It's much better than reading this entire document, trying to figure out how the audit went. Two pages, much better. What I would also like to say is, we are always available to the city council. As I said, we, we're working for you, so if there are ever any questions, any comments, any concerns, we are always available via phone call. Mark clearly has our, our phone number, and we can definitely answer the questions for you. It's better probably to answer the questions sooner rather than later, because, well, we all forget about things, and then the phone calls don't happen, and it's easier to get it done that way. But this letter, basically, what it's going to do, and on the first page here, we are just, we talk about, it says significant audit findings. Findings normally is a negative term. These aren't negative things, these are just differences that you're going to see in the financial statements. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board, for the year that we're issuing these financial statements for, implemented really two new pronouncements that had some impact on the city. The biggest one is GASB 68, and it is, it relates to the city's future liability essentially for their, for their PERS payments. So, there are PERS employees in the city that are going to retire at some point. It is now, GASB decided that it was time to put the liability related to that future funding in the financial statements. And so, when we look at the financial statements, you're going to see that there is, first of all, a lovely new 10-page footnote, which has every decent information you would ever want to know about PERS and retirees' benefits. It actually is pretty good reading. I learned a lot going through it, just some of the nuances of it. We're not PERS, so I don't, you know, pay attention to the retirement side of it a whole lot, but there is some really good information in there. The other thing that I want to talk about on this letter, then, is at the top of the second page, it talks about the fact that this document isn't all just money in, money out. There are some very significant estimates that go into making this document. In this top paragraph, we are talking a little about what some of those estimates are, and that's going to include GASB 68, so your, the new net pension liability asset, allowances for, you know, receivables that the city has that potentially will not be collected, useful lives of your capital assets. There's a lot of things to factor in. As part of our audit every year, we look at what the city has determined, you know, to estimate these at, and we decide if we're comfortable with those estimations, if they're reasonable, if they're not. Long process doing that generally, but we always work through it, and we're very happy with what was come up for estimates this year, and there were some changes this year. The larger document, I would like to basically just talk about the opinion in it, and it starts on page one essentially, and yet again, it's our letterhead. So, there is going to be a three-page letter in the front of it, and this is basically, really, this is our only part of this financial statement. The rest of it is the city's. This just tells you, you know, what our opinion is of these financial statements. Are they prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles? If, if they aren't, we talk about why they aren't, essentially. This, you can read all three pages, but what I'll basically say is, we gave an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements, which means that we don't see that there need to be any changes made to the financial statements for them to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, a clean opinion, a good opinion. On the second page, there is a section called Emphasis of Matter, and there are two items within there. The first is a change in accounting principle. That is... That is the GASB 68 that I discussed just a minute ago. Basically, what that did is, it put on the balance sheet of the city the unfunded liability that the city has related to future PERS payments. Lo and behold, nothing is simple with governmental accounting. You actually, at the end of the year, do not have an unfunded liability. You actually have overpaid your liability based on the actuarial study that was done. The reason for that is, there were some changes that the legislature made to future PERS, retirees' benefits. COLA's was the main one, and legislature restricted those, reduced those. So, that caused, basically, this whole valuation to flip the other direction, and so, basically, they're saying you were paying too much for a while there. Supreme Court came back later and said, no, you can't limit those. And so, next year, you're going to see an actual unfunded liability. This is just one of the weirdest years for some of this stuff. I did want to point out, right now, it's about $185,000 asset that is sitting on the government-wide financial statements, basically the consolidated financial statements of the city. If we were to look at, kind of where we would have started if that whole Supreme Court legislative thing didn't happen, it would have been about a $2 million liability to the city. And so, you can assume that next year, when you're looking at the balance sheet, you're going to have a liability instead of that asset, and it's probably going to be more than that $2 million, honestly, but it will definitely jump back the other direction for you. The other item in our opinion talks about the MINET receivables, and there was a pretty lengthy conversation this year about, you know, will the city be able to collect some of the receivables that MINET owes? Ended up this year by working with the city, that there is, basically, the 1.6 million that Mark mentioned earlier, there was an allowance put against that. So, basically, the city is determined they're probably not going to collect that 1.6 million. So, basically, bad debt expense of 1.6 million was recorded, and to offset that receivable. If you get the money, great, but just to be conservative in your financial statements, just put the reserve against it. Did you want to add anything to that, or are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I guess the only thing I would, when we looked at this, trying to determine what was, you know, what should be, we felt that there was, it was a good thing to do, to come up with some sort of a number, how to do that. And so, as we worked at that, what we did is, we looked at the money that we have received, and when you apply that to the debt service that we paid, MINET has been able to pay essentially all of the principal, not the interest. So, we felt that because of that, they're paying, they're paying what they owe, just not the interest. And what we record on the balance sheet is the amount that is owed. The interest gets recorded as it is incurred. The debt service is all out there in schedules, but we record the interest as we pay it. But all that principal is sitting on our balance sheet, and so, we felt that we could, it was a proper way to record or reflect, not a forgiveness of debt, but a likelihood that it will be difficult to collect that debt by just the money that they haven't paid us to date. So, there was, I guess, some discussion about if we were going to do more than that, and as we looked at it, we felt, we felt that the city and the auditors also felt that it was fair to represent it that way, and so, that's how it came out. If that makes sense, or do you have any questions with that?
And the last thing?
I got a question on this.
Sure.
You know, and you brought a topic up, it was brought up last year in the audit, about MINET. So, what are we looking at by 9, by 30, by 2030? Are we looking at 3.5 million? Are we looking at 2.5? How does that affect the city? Because that's uncollected debt that's not, and it's going to grow every year, right? I mean, am I wrong, or was it going to grow every year?
Yeah, where it affects the city, it affects it in two ways. It affects it from a cash flow standpoint, and it also affects our, potentially affects our bond rating down the road. If we, you know, if we have debt that won't be covered by MINET, and we anticipate that it won't be, that's been more funds that we have to pay to cover that debt ourselves. And so, it's definitely a negative against the city, but it is, what we have to do in terms of reporting, you have to report what you feel is actual and fair to represent. You want to represent fairly what the picture is, and so, we did that going forward. I know MINET is looking at a number of options to try to increase revenues. Like I said, they are stable from an operational standpoint. They're not able to cover all the debt. We're grateful for what they do cover. We wish they would cover more, but as far as what can be done, there's a lot of people working on that. I can't really tell you what could be done, if I could. That'd be a really great thing. Just can't do it. So, I don't know if you have any comments on that? Yeah?
Well, I'm just saying, 10 years in fission in accordance to '06, when we started, and we're 1.6 million in debt 10 years. So, another 10 years, are we?
You can figure somewhere.
If served later, the interest is, the principal's going to overdo the interest, so the interest is going to become less as you pay more principal down. And, you know, I mean, that won't be, right now, there's probably more interest paid than principal, and as the bond gets paid down, it goes the other way, just like a home loan or something, it goes the other way. So, what I'm just trying to say is, are we going to be indebted for another 10 years of 1.6 million? I mean...
We'll look at it every year. Every year, we'll review this.
Because it keeps getting pretty good every year, so.
And we do, when we go through the budgeting process, we look at what we anticipate. Historically, MINET has not been able to pay, and we factor that into the budget. Those funds come from Power and Light, and that's part of our budgeting process. So, in the past, we've been budgeting around $800,000. Actually, as I thought about it after your question earlier, I think we actually, in the most recent fiscal year, was like $671,000 that they weren't able to cover, and that's what we lent them. So, I would anticipate those kinds of numbers in the future, so you can kind of add that on through the years, depending on if they aren't able to change anything, and nothing really changes, and it's just kind of stable like it's been. If there is additional revenues, then likely that number would reduce, and if they have significant changes that they have to make operationally, then that number would be increased in terms of what we would expect for loans. And I would anticipate that those loans, going forward, we wouldn't consider them collectible until something significant changed, so.
You know, maybe just to royally clarify your question, the period of these bonds goes back to 2010. You said 10 years, you said 6 years on these bonds.
Yeah. Well, we'll pay off the one bond to $40 million, but I'm just trying to get it grasped, but where we're at. Now, my other question, and we'll come back to you, is, how does it affect the city financially if that uncollectible loan keeps building? Nothing? Doesn't make any difference, or, I mean, when on our audit reports? I mean, you brought it in two years in a row, so I'm just trying to get a handle on what we're doing here.
Yeah, and I think it definitely is a significant area to the city, and it's something that we just will look at every year. When we get here at the end, you know, to do the audit, we'll look at, you know, what the activity was during the year, we'll talk with Mark about collectibility again, and we'll just keep, you know, working with him to figure out what they think is going to be a fair allowance related to it.
My one point is, if it goes to 3 million, does it affect anything in the city at all? Doesn't make a damn bit of difference.
Not as long as you're recording an allowance, because the allowance essentially says, we have this, but this balance is going to zero because we don't think we're going to have these funds. And so, you're, in essence, recording that bad debt as you go along.
The adjustment ends up reducing our, the equity side of our balance sheet, so the net worth of the city is decreased as we do these write-offs. So, that's where, you know, when it comes for like, doing some sort of financing down the road, that's where it would come into play, when they look at those things, look at those metrics.
The last item that I wanted to point out in the financial statements is on page 83, so it's the second to last page, essentially. On top of the financial audit that we do annually, we also look at some state requirements that the city has, some of those being your, any public contracts that you do. Are you following the procurement rules related to that, getting open bids? Are you following local budget law, the gas tax monies you get? Are you spending that on allowed expenses, essentially? Things like that. We have one comment in our report, and it's down at the very bottom of that page there, and it just says that the city's budget was not submitted to the county on time. It was not submitted by September 30th of 2015. So, I think that's just kind of continuation of, this whole year being a slow process, essentially. And so, we didn't really deem it to be, you know, it's not a huge deal or anything, but it is a violation of local budget law for it, and so, it is included in this report. The other thing that I wanted to talk about this evening, and I will just hand this little thing out here. Now, Tom comes and he does happy faces and frowny faces that I don't have on here. I apologize.
Well, we know what the message is.
Well, I'll just talk through it, and you can put a happy face or frowny face.
I finally managed to master Tom's reporting style.
It's a guessing, John.
So, this is just, basically, I took some of the city's, I will say, you know, more significant funds, larger funds, and just did a quick trend analysis on them, just to kind of show you what is happening within the funds. So, each one of these pages is a different fund. First page is the general fund. The top section on there just talks about, looks at your fund balance. What's your fund balance doing? Is it increasing? Is it decreasing? Is it staying about the same? Generally, a good health, you know, a good, healthy general fund will, you know, at least be steady, but potentially increasing, you know, also, and that will allow you to have, provide more general government services, essentially, if you're able to build that up. You will see that from 2012 to 2014, that it was pretty steady. I mean, it was up, it was down a little bit, but 2015, there was a pretty significant decrease in the general fund, and that was due to transfers out from the general fund, essentially. And so, that was a clear decision on the city's part to do that, but that did decrease the fund balance in it.
And that was due to the police department, right, and the build of the police station.
Next section there just talks about, you know, you have carryover money into the next year. How much of the year is that carryover money going to pay your expenses for the year? A good threshold is to cover about six months, up to 12 months of fund balance, so that way, if for some reason your revenues, you know, are delayed or something, you'd be able to pay your expenses. You can see, basically, on the month's row there, that it's been pretty steady for, you know, the past three years, and then this year, you have about four months' worth of fund balance carryover into the next year. So, it's a little less than what that six-month threshold is, but it's still not, you know, that bad, I will say. The next section just talks about, you know, in a general fund, you collect revenues, and you have different general government expenditures related to it. Can the general fund sustain itself, or does it need money from other funds, essentially, in order to cover those general, you know, the general governmental services? If that bottom row was 100%, that means that you would have enough revenue to cover your expenditures for the year. You'll notice that you're hovering right around 50, 55%. That means that you're really reliant on other funds to pay for those general government services, and a lot of that money comes through internal service charges from other funds, essentially. So, it's built into your system. This is just saying that the general fund by itself does not sustain those general fund services. Next page, one of our favorite funds here. MINET, this is a very, you know, very critical fund to the city. There's just a lot of, you know, activity within it, essentially. The fund balance in this stays pretty steady. What I would like to show you really is that, the bottom section in here, because Mark already talked about it a little bit, if we're comparing revenues, like say for 2015, revenues are $460,000, but you have expenditures of over 1.1 million. That fund is not sustaining itself, and so, it really relies on transfers in from Power and Light, as Mark said earlier, in order to just not have a negative cash balance in there, essentially. Did you want to add something?
That's the debt service.
Yes. Yeah, that 1.1 is the bond payments, essentially, and that is principal and interest bond payments. Page three, a little bit of trend analysis on your sewer fund, and then page four is Power and Light. They're both really about the same, you know, they seem to be pretty healthy there. Your fund balance really isn't increasing or decreasing significantly. The second section, it just kind of compares, you're going to have operating income from these funds. Once you have your operating income, you do have to make some debt payments. So, once you're done with the debt payments, do you have money left over? And that money left over would be for future capital improvements, for just, you know, a reserve, essentially. A good ratio is 2.0. That bottom row, you're pretty much right on with a 2.0, which means that after you make your debt payments, you know, you still have money left over that you can use for other purposes, essentially, including saving for future years, if necessary. Power and Light Fund, you're going to see roughly the same thing in there in that middle section, but actually, the number's even a little bit better. So, 2.0 being a good ratio for you, you arrange from 2.84 all the way up over 3, which means that you're able to put some money away for future projects, essentially, then, or other things that the city needs to pay related to that. But this is just a real quick and dirty analysis of those funds. This is just something I like to do, especially with my first year being, you know, the partner on this, just kind of look and see what the city, you know, has been doing over the past four or five years, and what's really changing, what isn't. I was very pleasantly surprised when I put these numbers together. I mean, these are better than, you know, some other, you know, places that I've had to put these numbers together for, so I want to commend, you know, the city for what they really do, and, you know, how important, you know, fiscal responsibility is. Any questions of us? But it was such a riveting presentation here, there should be lots of questions.
If you do this next year, I mean, could you send this out earlier than the meeting? I'd like to.
Absolutely.
I could have compared it more in the book, you know, because I was trying to do it at home with some figures, and it wasn't looking very good.
Other than that, I did it this afternoon, I would have sent it to you yesterday, but I definitely will.
Very good, thank you.
So, one of the things that comes out of this, and Mark, I'll turn this to you, but there, HB 2174 wants us to say what we're going to do as a corrective action for the audit deficiencies. So, fill us in a little bit on that.
So, there was actually three findings, one of which is included for that House Bill So, the information that's there in the back of the audit, that actually will go to the Secretary of State, and there was that one deficiency that was noted, it was the compliance issue. That was actually me. I, in the course of, I always take the budget document to the county, along with all of the information that we need to certify our taxes. That's done before July 15th, and we always have our final budget document printed and ready to go, and I just take it with me and take it down to the clerk's office at the same time. And this year, this last year, wasn't able to do that because of account number changes, and I had to update the budget document with all the new account numbers, and so, it wasn't printed and finished when I went over to the county to do that. And then, in the course of getting that done, I actually got all that done in August, but we were having the vendor in to do training and be able to actually begin to really dig into the GL, and one thing led to another, and I realized in January, when the auditors were coming for field work, that I had not done that. So, anyway, I knew that would be an issue, and I apologize. But that's the one that will go to the state, and that's what this staff report is for, is to address that. And as far as the other two items, they were internal control issues that the auditors know... noted. One of them was timely reconciliation of our bank statements, and the other was our building permits, tracking the permits so that we know the status of what all the permits are in, similar like we do with our checks. Anytime we do cash disbursements, write checks, we track the check numbers, any voided checks. We always know the status of our checks, and that way we can tell if there's any gaps, we immediately will go look and see what happened, because we, you know, that's, we just want to control that. And so we want to do the same with permits. And so again, we have had procedures in the past to address this, and when you start over with new software, all your procedures blow up, and you go figure out how to put it all back together. And so we worked through that last year, and we're actually still working through some issues still, because I was able to develop procedures, but those are being handed off to other staff members, and so we're in training again on things to try to kind of balance workloads and get things more dialed in. So those items are part of the staff report for the budget, or, I'm sorry, for the audit, just so that you were aware of what we're doing to try to address those things and that those things did come up. So that's kind of internally for us to work on and you guys to know about. The House Bill 2147, or 74, that was passed last year and requires council understanding of anything that showed up in the audit report and staff to, you know, to come forward with what would need to be done to address that. And then that needs to actually go to the Secretary of State within 30 days of the completion of the audit, so. So that's why we want to present this all tonight, so we can make that timely.
John, is that hand up?
No, it's elevated.
Counsel, this would be Resolution 1812. Are there any questions or comments about this resolution? If not, I could have a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 1812, a resolution to comply with House Bill 2174, after receipt of the fiscal year 1415 city upon the audit report.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Phil, it's a roll call, please.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
So that passes unanimously, Mark. You know, I've known you for a long time, doing this job extremely well for a long time. These two software conversions in the time you've been working have been absolutely monumental piles of work, and I've been amazed at the whole thing. You made a mistake. How dare you? And it was a whopper. You left a piece of paper on your desk for a little while. So thank you. You know, I just want to really seriously applaud your hard work. To me, this is such a minor blip that, you know, it's a shame that we have to go through this process, pass this resolution, and amongst all the other things you were doing, to forget that you had to change your routine after years of doing it a certain way, you know.
I, so, I appreciate that. I was just going to mention, too, there was a lot of other folks that were deeply involved.
Of course there were.
One in particular.
When I say you, that means the whole group.
Kind of time, thank you. I appreciate it.
So are there any council comments tonight? I have one little item I need to raise, and that is Counselor Carey, his Bank of State, has requested a potential leave over the next few months, as he has some surgeries to put things back where they belong and healing up from saying. And so he has requested the council grant him the ability to be gone for potentially, you know, multiple meetings at a stretch. And Lane, do we need a motion or just a?
You would take action if you wanted, or if you didn't approve it?
Okay, so unless I see, no, we're not doing that, I'm going to assume everybody's okey-dokey, and John, go heal up. I know you have a surgery coming tomorrow.
Well, I tend to be here, but you never know.
Yeah, absolutely. And you have a surgery coming up tomorrow, as I understand, so go make them so straight.
Make them straight, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And what is it tomorrow, wrist or wrist? Okay, very good, very good. And what I'd like to do tonight, we have both an urban renewal agency meeting tonight with a couple of items, including the audit of that organization, and we also have a work session. In order to get our accounting people, I guess they've taken off already.
Yeah, Mark can do this.
Okay, so in order to get Mark on, I'd like to go ahead and do the urban renewal agency first, and then go to work session. But after work session, we also have an executive session. And so I'm going to read the script for the executive session at this time, which reads that "The City Council will now meet an executive session for the purpose of discussing the performance evaluation of public officers and employees and real, and a real property transaction. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602I, the performance evaluation of public officers and employees, and ORS 192.6602E, real property transactions, which allows the council in the executive session. Representatives of the news media and designated staffs or staff or other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session, and at the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. It's not anticipated that action will be taken this evening after returning from the executive session." And again, that's after the work session, not right now, so we're not bringing anybody out. All right. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the council meeting to, to the urban renewal agency meeting. Sorry, what?
Make the adjourn, the motion adjourned.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, we will turn ourselves into the urban renewal agency, and I will call the agency to order and ask Phil to recall the roll with dropping the counselor label, and away you go.
Mr. Carey.
Here.
Mr. Guthrie.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Milligan.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer is excused. Mr. Silvernagle.
Here.
Mr. Oberst.
Yes. Any citizen comments tonight on the urban renewal agency? Hearing none, we have a single item consent calendar, approving minutes of the urban renewal agency meeting from November 17th of last year. If I could have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we'll turn it to the business agenda, and the first item is the fiscal 1415 audit presentation. And Mark, you're on.
Hey, so historically, we've done this a couple of years now, we'll have a separate report for our urban renewal district. Prior to that, the district was included as a, as a separate fund in our, in our financial statements for the city. And there's, a separate report is required when you hit a certain expense threshold. And we actually don't require a full audit, but because it's included as part of the audit of the city, they issue a separate report for us, and that way we comply with state statute noted for this, to our district. Otherwise, we would just get a review, basically, of what happened. And as far as, you know, year-to-year changes, we're kind of in a saving mode, I guess, in the, in the district, comparing 14 to 15. 14, actually, it was in 13 when the street scape was done, and the loan came to do that. And so the fund is essentially paying back the city for the, for those funds, and so that's all, that's all, that's really the main activity right now. It's just debt service and the fund. There is cash accruing for future projects. Not a lot was done in 2015. So really, not a, not a lot here. And actually, interestingly, the comments that I mentioned earlier relative to internal controls certainly apply to the district as well, because we operate everything all together at the city in terms of the finances. The reporting is done separately, but we don't have a separate set of books that we run the district through. It's all through the city's general ledger, through the separate fund, so we can track everything separately. But it's still all through the city's internal controls, so those apply. But the comment, or the, the, the House Bill 2174 actually didn't end up in this report, so there's no response there required. So it's really just a pretty straightforward report. Any questions on the district?
So I'm assuming that we just need to say okey-dokey or accept this audit, and that's what we do since we don't have questions. Thank you. Appreciate it. What's the projected amount rolling over into next year for urban renewal at this point? Ballpark?
So you're talking fund balance, what's the carryover? I don't remember if we talked about it.
Okay, fine.
I think it's like in the 350,000 to 400,000 range.
Okay. Best thing to learn out of this thing. Okay, thanks. And the only other item we have tonight for urban renewal is to approve the general assistance grant for 1140 Main Street East. So, Mark, the other Mark.
One thing, can I ask this? I, you know, we talked about, just, Scott. We talked about the urban, you know, the cost and the amount of money rolled over. I don't remember 300,000, you know, because we were talking about 130, 40,000 to spend on the, for the water, the irrigation and stuff. Can we have a figure on that really at the next meeting?
Yeah, I'll get to you.
That's all. I don't, I didn't remember being that close, because we were nervous about having enough money.
Right, we'll get that to you.
Yeah, at one point, I remembered it being down to like less than 100,000 range was your, was your estimate, so. There was a question about whether we'd be able to do anything for the next couple of years, so. Thanks. Right. Go, Mark.
Agency members, you've got a general assistance grant application that's been submitted for the Montessori School located 1140 Main Street East. Over the past several years, the Urban Renewal Agency has given several small general assistance grants to help with development of that property. In this instance, the Montessori School is reconstructing an access walkway that's located on their property. The plan improvement would replace an existing gravel walkway on the property with a concrete walk that would be ADA accessible. And the applicant is requesting $300 for the new sidewalk, which is 50% of the project cost. The applicant's provided a cost estimate of $600 for the project. The, the grant assistance program is supposed to carry out the goals and objectives in the urban renewal district plan. In this instance, this is applicable to Goal Four, which says that this will promote and manage the development and redevelopment of properties adjacent to Highway 51 from Highway 99 East to the S-curves at the eastern city limits. The project would improve a building located in that area. Staff is recommending approval of the general assistance grant for $300. There are some sample motions on page two of your staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Juliet Sloan is also here from the Montessori School.
Juliet, I'd just like to say I appreciate these small projects. And it's just, you know, it's cool, you're in here every year with another little idea for improvement of a property in our urban renewal district. And thanks for keeping this source of assistance in mind. It's a good use of the funds we have available.
I appreciate that you allow for them to be more than one. Doing it all at once was too much for us to be able to afford, but over the four years, it's been nice.
Very good. Any other comments, counsel, on this? Any questions for Mark on the nature of things? We have a motion at the bottom of page two of the staff report.
Maybe one comment, if I think about it. So I'm not sure, small, it probably doesn't really have a major impact, but we'll have that Highway 51 project, it'll jump out there. Will this tie in with that, or do we, we don't know if it'll tie in probably at this point.
I think this is actually off.
It's off at water.
That's what he thought first. Yeah, it goes from the at-water walkway, replaces some steps.
It will match you.
I wish that it were the front, but I'm, I can wait another year.
Right, okay, good.
Very good. Thanks for the clarification, Ed. So, counsel, a motion?
Move to approve the general assistance grant application for $300 for the property located at 1140 Main Street East.
Second?
Second.
I'll give this one to John. Moved and seconded, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go build a sidewalk. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the urban renewal agency meeting back into the city council and the work session. It's a move. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's take a five-minute break, and we can.